Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, January 22nd to order. And remind everyone that we recognize that Prince Albert is located within Treaty VI's territory, and it is the homeland of the Dakota and Métis. We extend our respect to all Indigenous people for their valuable past and present contributions, and recognize and respect the cultural diversity within the city of Prince Albert. With that, the City Clerk will open with a prayer.
Oh God, let us each, in our own way, ask your wisdom and guidance in our deliberations. Help us to incorporate into all our decisions those values which will enable us to fulfill our mission, to act as responsible stewards, and to respect and value the cultural and spiritual tradition of all citizens of the city of Prince Albert. For this, we pray, amen.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Mayor Dion.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I need a secondor. Sorry. Counselor Lennox up.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you. And it's carried. Next item is Presentations and Recognitions. We don't have none. And then, number five, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Counselor Lennox up.
Thank you. I declare conflict of interest on item 11.9, as I am a board member of the Prince Albert Cooperative Childcare. I declare conflict of interest on items 11.19 and 11.20, as I am the subject of those two items.
Thank you very much. I've reminded. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do a declaration of conflict of interest on 11.7 and 11.12, which I'm the board chair of the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Any others?
Deputy Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead, Counselor Head.
Thank you so much. Today, I'll be declaring a conflict, and I'm going to err on the side of an abundance of caution today. So I have several items that I'm going to be declaring a conflict of interest in. So first one would be 11.3. I am recently a member of this club, and therefore I won't be participating in the vote. 11.5. I have members of family playing in this tournament, and as you all know, I'm a member of a Black Laurentian Indian Band, therefore I'm a member of Prince Albert Grand Council, and I'll be declaring a conflict on this one. 11.5 would be the other one. For the same reasons as I noted, I am a registered Indian in the Black Laurentian Indian Band, and a member of Prince Albert Grand Council, and I have family members directly involved in these tournaments.
Excuse me, can I just clarify, was that 11.5 and 11.6? Thank you very much.
Also, I have 11.12 is another item. That building, I have family members living in that building, those buildings, so I will not be participating in that vote. Also, 11.14 is another item I'd like to flag. Long service and retirement recognition policy, as we know, that is policy on behalf of the employees of the city of Prince Albert. Two of those working groups are the QP groups, so I will not be participating in those in that item as well. Also, I'd like to disclose a conflict of interest on 11.19. The correspondence from Mike Henry, item, the QP conflicts, as I'm a subject to that decision. Also, I'd like to disclose a conflict, declare conflict on 11.20, for the same reasons that I noted, a subject matter of those debates.
Thank you very much. Are there any others? A reminder to the councilors that there is paperwork to complete and hand in to this the clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, adoption of the minutes. Do I have a mover? Counselor Miller.
That the minutes of the council regular meeting held December 11th, 2023 be taken, read, and adopted.
Thank you. Counselor Solomon.
Deputy Mayor, I'll second those.
Thank you very much. I'll open the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
In favor.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item on the agenda is Notice of Proclamation. There are none. Eight, public hearing. There are none. Number nine, delegations. There are none. Communications. There are none. Next item is the Reports of Administration and Committees. We'll start with 11.1. 2025 Community Grant Program Application to Saskatchewan Lotteries. Go ahead, Counselor Lennox up.
I move that the city submit an application form for funds through the Saskatchewan Lotteries Community Grant Program for Sports, Culture, and Recreation, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the 2025 application form and any other required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'd like to second that Deputy Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Head will second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
In favor.
Thank you. The vote is closed, and it carries. Next item is 11.2, Naming Rights and Sponsorship Policy. What is the wish of council? Mayor Dion.
I move the amended naming rights and sponsorship policy be approved.
Thank you. Counselor Cody.
Yes, I second that.
Thank you. Counselor Lennox up.
I support this motion. I would like to read one portion of the changes that are contained in this motion. So, this body, this council, voted at a previous meeting to have administration consider gender diversity and diversity at large in our naming rights and sponsorship policy for things when we name a park or when we name a street. And so that has been reflected in this policy where it was not reflected previously. I'm going to read the sentence here in the policy. It's 7.01(c). The consideration will be given to enable diversity and gender equity where applicable. So it's not the strongest of language. It says where applicable. However, I support that this is better. This is an improvement to what we had previously, which was no indication to diversity or gender equity. So it's moving up and an improvement. I would note that other cities do have stronger language than this. However, I support this motion, and that doesn't mean we can't improve even further in the future.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
In favor Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item on the agenda, 11.3. The Prince Albert. Oh, sorry. Thank you. The clerk has just informed me that Counselor Head had declared a conflict, and he is now removed from the teams, team meetings. 11.3, the Prince Albert Golf and Curling Club Trust Fund, Dumb Waiter Repair and Service. What is council's wish? Counselor Cody.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that $15,207 be approved from the Prince Albert Golf and Curling Club Trust Fund in support of the dumbwaiter supply and installation. And just one correction there, really the Golf and Curling Club Trust Fund, it's not the Golf and Curling Club, it's the Golf and Curling Center.
Thank you for the correction. Any other discussion? Mayor Dion, sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, thank you very much. Any discussion? Not seeing any discussion, I'll open the vote. Sorry, the vote is now open. And the vote carries. Thank you, everyone. The next agenda item is 11.4. Destination Marketing Levy Grant Funding Policy Changes. Has Counselor Head joined us? Thank you very much. What's council's wish? Counselor Solomon.
I'll move that the amended Destination Marketing Levy Policy be approved.
Thank you. Counselor Miller.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Just a question Deputy Mayor, if I can.
Just one second, I do have Counselor Edwards, and then I will put you in the queue. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just have a quick question. As part of the report, so if it's a late event, let's say someone gets awarded a provincial soccer tournament, and it's four weeks prior because no one's able to host this in the province, can we still work with groups? Because this seems to limit it a little bit.
Go ahead Director. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Edwards. Yes, absolutely. The intent of the policy is to attract events. We're amending the agreement to, you know, allow that six-week buffer period to apply, but it is well within the DMF committee's purview to be able to consider those special circumstances, and we certainly would not turn those events away.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Head.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I see the change, I read the report, and I agree with all the changes A, B, C, and D as listed here. I guess I have a question about D. By increasing that lower portion amount from zero to 20, would that not limit some of the ability to, for organizations to host events, I guess I would say? So just a little bit of clarification needed on the proposed approach rationale on D. Currently, are we, are groups who have zero amount of rooms, I guess, predicted? Do they still get this $1,500? And I guess, what is the change going to reflect?
Your question is directed to the Director. Go ahead Director.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and thank you Counselor Head for the question. While I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee, the recommended change is what we feel reflects the original intent of the policy, which is heads in beds, more people in our hotel rooms. So we wanted to set that minimum of 20 people. I don't believe we have a necessarily huge influx of those activities or those events under 20. I think 20 is typically the minimum, so we simply wanted to reflect that in the amended policy.
So the current minimum reflects zero, I guess. Has any grants been provided to organizations? Because I guess, my thoughts are looking at the approach, it's growing existing events, attracting new events to Prince Albert, and supporting repairs, of course, and upgrades of a capital nature. But one of the objectives is attract events to the city of Prince Albert, I guess. Would this not go against that policy, I guess, limiting, bringing it up to 20? Is it not open for people who are organizing without, you know, one bed, I guess? One hotel room? Five hotel rooms? 19?
Mayor Dion, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'll get up as the Chair of the Destination Marketing Fund on two changes. First, I'll respond to Counselor Edwards. We've always done that. And the last one we did, if you remember, the baseball tournament that was held at Crescent Acres got out because of the fires in B.C., and two weeks later, they were held in P.A., and we funded that project. Now, why we moved it up to 20 is strictly the whole project idea of this is sets of beds. We've only had two applications under the 20, but one was for three. Well, $1,500 that you get will pay for 10, 12 rooms. So that's why we did it. The hotelers made it quite clear to us this policy is for heads in beds, and we've only had two over the years. And one was for three, and that just didn't make sense because it sounded more like a local meeting than an event. And we want to encourage everyone to, and we think being at 20 is not unreasonable.
Thank you. Was there anything further? Counselor Head, any clarification?
No, I, no, I guess that's, thanks for that clarification. I guess I would like to see, yeah, a little bit less of a number, but here we are landing at this motion. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you Counselor Head. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes, did we change the number of 40% upon signing? Was that changed, or are we the same as what we've always been there?
Go ahead Director.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor, and thank you Counselor Edwards for the question. Yes, the 40% prior to the event and the 60% follow-up remains. What we were finding is that we were having some organizations that would prefer just to get the lump sum once the event is complete. And so that 100% once the event is complete is what is being added to the policy as a request from organizations, and it's simply to streamline the process. And, you know, quite frankly, it works quite well for the Destination Marketing Committee as well, as there's much less paperwork and process that needs to be followed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll open the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
I oppose.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 11.5. Counselor Head has declared a conflict. The Destination Marketing Fund Grant Application Form, the Prince Albert Grand Council Men's Recreation Hockey Tournament. What is council's wishes? Counselor Edwards.
Thanks. Deputy Mayor, I will move that the event destination, the new event Destination Marketing Fund Grant Application from Prince Albert Grand Council Sport, Culture, and Recreation for funding the Prince Albert Grand Council Men's Recreation Hockey Tournament, scheduled for January 12th to January, or January 14th, 2024, in the amount of $30,000 be approved. Two, that $30,000 be funded from the Destination Marketing Levy Reserve, and three, the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the funding agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Counselor Solomon.
Deputy Mayor, I'll second that motion, please.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll open the vote. The vote is now open. And the vote carries. The next item on the agenda is Destination Marketing Fund Grant Application Form, 2024 Senators' Cup Full Contact Hockey Tournament, and a reminder Counselor Head has declared conflict. Counselor Edwards.
I'll move that the event retention Destination Marketing Fund grant application from Prince Albert Grand Council Sports and Recreation for funding the 2024 Senators' Cup Full Contact Hockey Tournament, scheduled for March 14th to March 17th, 2024, in the amount of $30,000 be approved.
Thank you.
Two, that $30,000 be funded from the Destination Marketing Levy Reserve, and three, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the funding agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much. Counselor Miller.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mayor Dion.
Well, I'll just explain a little. This is one of the events that the Grand Council puts on that actually sells out our city, that and the powwow. And as a Destination Marketing Fund, we do appreciate them because they continue to bring it here, and it's partly because of the fund, because there's heavy pressure to bring it in to Saskatoon because it's such a professional-run event, and they have, it's a high-end hockey. They have lots of ex-hockey players that play on that, and lots that have been out of playoffs, and it's a great draw for our community. So I'd just like to share that. This is one of the biggest events that brings people in to our city yearly.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? I'll open the vote. The vote is now open. And the vote carries. Thank you. The next item is 11.7. Yep. Thank you very much. And is he on? Counselor Head, thank you. Welcome back Counselor Head. The next item is 11.7, 2022 Settlement Municipal Share Housing Projects. What is council's wish?
I'll move this motion Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much Counselor Head. I require a secondor for us to continue. Go ahead Mayor.
I'll second it, that the 2022 Settlement Municipal Share.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get Counselor Head, that's my fault. I'll get Counselor Head. Thank you. I'm sorry Counselor Head, I didn't get you to read out the motion. Are you able to? Thank you.
I am. So I'm going to move that the 2022 Settlement Municipal Share for Housing Projects of the Prince Albert Housing Authority, in a total amount of $67,391.15 be funded in the year of 2023 from the housing reserve.
Thank you, and seconded by the Mayor. Okay, any discussion? Go ahead, Mayor Dion.
Just to explain what this is, there's been some changes with the Housing Authority. We now have the right to have a member. We did not ever before. So Charlene Miller, that's why she's declared herself the conflict of interest, because she now sits on that board with us. And my, the Governor of Saskatchewan, myself, are responsible to get applications for that board. And one thing that we have done is, and we thank all the members that there, quite a few of the members have been there over 20 years, that we now have a new board in place, and we're really excited because these are one of the things they're going to look at, is should they really be placed in windows if they don't need to be replaced? You know, just because they say time, you know, they're five years old, time to replace them, I always argue that point. If they're still functional, we shouldn't be doing that. So we're looking forward to a change in the amount that we have to pay in the future.
Thank you Mayor. Counselor Lennox up.
I oppose this motion on the basis of where the $67,000 is proposed to be coming from. The proposal is that this, these monies come out of our housing reserve. And in every year that I've been on council, leading up until last year, this municipal share was taken out of general fund, and we were not suggesting out of reserve. And the difference there is that our housing reserve is actually for, used for our affordable housing projects. So for example, Riverbank and also community housing, they, under our policy, they make application usually every year to us through our own policy, requesting if they can receive grant funds for building new affordable housing units in our city. And if we deplete the housing reserve in this way, using it for uses that we haven't usually wanted to use housing reserve for, then we really run the risk of not having those monies available for affordable housing projects. And this is the only fund that we do fund housing through. As well, our city policy, the housing reserve policy states that we will input $42,000 each budget year, and we have not done that for the past three years. We have, as council, we debated that issue at budget, and we decided not to fill in, top up, the housing reserve due to fiscal constraints. And so we're depleting it in two ways. We're taking it out for the municipal share, and we're not putting it in at budget time, and that's a concern. And I know other members of council have raised the topic that that housing reserve is in a healthy state. You know, it's over $100,000 at its balance now, but if we, it's about long-term planning, that if we continue to make a habit out of spending out of the reserve and not putting money into that reserve, that's critical. That we talk in this council chamber a lot about housing homelessness, getting people through the housing spectrum, and this reserve, those last two words in this motion, are critical for that. And so I strongly oppose this motion, based only on where the funds are proposed to be taken from.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Cody.
Yes, thank you very much. In all due respect, that is where the money should come from, is from the housing reserve, because that reserve is there for nonprofit housing, and this is nonprofit housing. So I have to disagree with you there, not often that I do, but I do this time. But my question is, a couple of meetings ago, in fact, I think it was in November, I asked if we could get a meeting with the Housing Authority, because I think it's necessary for us to have a little look at this stuff. You know, I can tell you right now, we are spending money on some of those places that are absolutely not necessary. Other ones, they aren't spending any money on. I know that there's eight units here a while ago were shut down in one of the high-rises because of mold. You should never have that happen in housing that's owned by us, the Government of Canada, or the government, well, Government of Canada, Government of Saskatchewan, and Government of Prince Albert. That's who owns these houses, and we should not let them go to that kind of disrepair. Another thing that bothers me in the whole issue here is that we're looking for housing for homeless people all the time. You know, we're always talking about we should build more housing for homeless people. I agree we need more housing for homeless people, but we've got tons of housing here that's not capable of holding, that's not available to them because they're in disrepair, they're in fact probably not inhabitable. So why would we not ask the Housing Authority to come before us, have a little look at this situation? If we can help in any way, get the provincial government and/or the federal government to help us out, I think that's exactly what we should be doing. So I would beg of the city manager, or whomever is the person that we should talk to here, ask them if we could have that meeting as quick as possible so that we can kind of get this underway.
Thank you Counselor Cody. Mayor Dion.
Yes, he has accepted. I did write him when we brought it up, and we're just confirming the date, he has accepted. We had to give him some information because we wanted to come to answer some of her questions, but he is more than pleased to come, and it's pretty soon at one of the upcoming meetings, just very shortly.
Thank you Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Go ahead Counselor Head.
Thank you so much. I can't agree more with Counselor Cody and some of the comments he has. I mean, we do have a lot of homes within our community that need to be addressed, and more inhabitable, I would say, because our closer review on what those properties look like and what can be done moving forward. So I'm really excited to hear from the Mayor that we do have a meeting scheduled, and we will see those meetings in our schedule invites. But it also kind of makes me think, because the federal government was... But it also kind of makes me think, because the federal government was announced here as well, this Rapid Housing Initiative that they mentioned, and we talked about it at the last FSCM conference as well. Where is the administration on that application? And it may be not appropriate for this discussion, Deputy Mayor, but also maybe more of a topic of agenda item for that meeting with the Housing Authority. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think that we should put that on the agenda for the Housing Authority. It is not directly impacted on the topic at hand. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Head. Mayor Dion.
We were gonna put that on the agenda, but it doesn't fall under his category. Unfortunately, it's a federal housing program. But we do have an announcement coming that we have finally gotten approval from that Rapid Housing. And I'm well involved with that with Riverbank, because we want to get as much as we can. Whenever we can get federal funding to help with the problem that we want, we're all in.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll open up the vote. The vote is now open. Councillor Head.
In favor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item is 11.8, the Donation Policy and Procedure. What is the wish of council? Go ahead, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will move that the amended donation policy and procedure be approved.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. I need a seconder, please. Councillor Solomon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will second that motion, please.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. The vote is now open. Councillor Head.
In favor.
Thank you. I think I am missing one vote. Check your votes. Thank you very much. And it carries. Thank you very much, councillor Lennox Zapp. Okay, the next item, 11.9. Councillor Lennox Zapp has recused herself. It's the Tax Exemption Agreement for the Daycare Properties. What does council's wish? Go ahead, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will move that a tax exemption agreement between the city and the following five daycare properties for a five-year term from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028 be approved. A, 139 Eighth Street East Family Futures Incorporated. B, 196 Ninth Street East Family Future Incorporated. C, 199 Sixth Street East Prince Albert Child Care Cooperative Association. D, 2805 First Ave West, South Hill Child Care Cooperative Association Limited. And E, 202 Tenth Street East Prince Albert Aboriginal Head Start Program. Two, that the municipal taxes and levies be exempt, excluding local improvement levies, to the following extent. A, a full exemption provided that the Saskatchewan Ministry of Government Relations and, as required, the affected school divisions provide consent pursuant to Section 263.3 of the Cities Act. Or B, where consent is not provided per Section 263. Two, a partial exemption to the extent that each affected taxpayer shall pay taxes equivalent to the city's financial obligations to pay non-consenting affected taxing authorities pursuant to Section 263.2 of the Cities Act. And three, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Councillor Miller.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Not seeing any, I'll open the vote. The vote is now open. Councillor Head.
In favor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item on the agenda. 11.10, Request for Tax Relief, the Prince Albert Share-A-Male Food Bank Incorporated and the Prince Albert Habitat for Humanity Saskatchewan. Councillor Lennox Zapp.
I move that tax exemption agreement between the city, Prince Albert Habitat for Humanity Saskatchewan, and the Prince Albert Share-A-Male Food Bank, Inc., for the five-year term from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028 be approved, that the municipal taxes and levies be exempt, excluding local improvement levies, to the following extent. A full exemption provided that the Saskatchewan Ministry of Government Relations and, as required, the affected school divisions provide consent pursuant to Section 263 of the Cities Act. Or where consent is not provided per Section 263, a partial exemption to the extent that each affected taxpayer shall pay taxes equivalent to the city's financial obligation to pay non-consenting affected taxing authorities pursuant to Section 263 of the Cities Act. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreements on behalf of the city.
Thank you, councillor. We need a seconder. Councillor Solomon.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the vote. The vote is now open. Councillor Head.
In favor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is 11.11, Pound Keeping Agreement, the Prince Albert Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Incorporated. What does council's wish? Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll so move that the Pound Keeping Agreement between the city and the Prince Albert Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Inc., appointing the Prince Albert SPCA as the pound keeper for the city be approved for a five-year term effective January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028. Two, that the Pound Keeping Agreement state that the city shall pay to the Prince Albert SPCA the amount of a fee for service as approved through the city's yearly budget process for providing the services as the pound keeper within the confines of the city. And three, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Not seeing any, we'll move to a vote.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Just one second.
Sorry, no.
No, no worries. Go ahead, councillor Head.
Just, I mean, I agree with the motion. I have a couple of questions about processes. So in the report, it says that the SPCA shall accept animals into the shelter from the city's bylaw enforcement department 24 hours a day and seven days a week. Because I get questions from public about what do we do when we hear outside of regular hours? So I also see in the report that there's Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then there's a voicemail that is checked on weekends from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Just again, a reminder to the public about, you know, accessing that line. And again, yeah, are we providing that service? Because who do we call? And those are cases, I believe there's a number after hours that we recall, but it also talks about the bylaw enforcement. So just a question on that one.
Thank you. A question to the director. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thank you, councillor Head, for the question. So yeah, you are correct. So the Pound Keeping Agreement stipulates that the shelter shall be open from 11 till 5:00 AM. And it is to be staffed during those hours. However, our city bylaw unit does have access to the building if necessary, and that access is 24 hours a day. However, as you alluded to, we don't have staff 24 hours a day. So in saying that, our animal servicing agreement, which is separate, which you've spoken to, does have an after-hours phone line that initiates, that is checked by the SPCA twice a day. Now, it's my understanding that the public has had concerns of the response. We have followed up with SPCA and we continue to do so to assure our residents that that call, that answering service is being provided. And we certainly commit to doing that. However, I would caution that if it is an immediate concern, if there's a hazard or, you know, life danger or something like that, an attack, that the public does contact city police. And in some cases, if it's just a stray, you know, a stray cat that might need a home or something like that, bylaw enforcement might be accepting those the earliest of the next day. So there are some options there. And all of those numbers are available on the city website, www.cdp.com.
One clarification, Director. I think you may have said 11:00 AM to 5:00 AM. What are the hours?
Thank you, 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Head. Any other questions? We're gonna open the vote. The vote is now open. Councillor Head.
In favor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And vote carries. The next item on the agenda is 11.12, Assignment of Rental Construction Incentive Program Agreement, 2951 and 2999. Reminder that councillor Head and councillor Miller have both declared a conflict and have left. Councillor Head is not on teams. Okay, what is council's wish? Councillor Solomon.
I'll move that the rental constructive incentive program agreements between the city and Murray and Michelle Ketsmerick for the multi-unit dwellings located at 2551 and 2999, Fifth Avenue, sorry, 5A Avenue East be assigned to a new property owner once the property sale has been finalized. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute any necessary documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Edwards.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mayor Dion.
Yeah, I have some questions of the department and maybe are legal. This was a 15-year agreement. And the original owner received the money. And now it's been sold to a second owner. And my concern is, when you buy rental properties, sometimes you buy them because you see the opportunity to fix them up a little and raise the rent. So I'd like to know, in this agreement, because we haven't seen the sales agreement, is it guaranteed that the rent's gonna stay the same for the next five years? And the other thing I also question is, in my past life, when we did all these agreements, and we did tons of them, we never let the original mover off the hook till the 15 years was over because they were the original movers. And so in this case, we would have them on because they received the $80,000, not the purchaser. They already have the money. And now we're at the last five years. And the only reason that we do it is to prevent legal action. Because if they don't, if they raise the rent, break the agreement, then we have to go after them and they didn't get the money. It was the first party. So those are just my two concerns, that number one, do we have a guarantee in the sales agreement that the rent, because we gave the money because it was affordable housing? And also, are we going to keep the original person that got the $80,000 responsible for the next five years?
And your question is to the director? Thank you very much. Director, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thank you, Mayor, for the question. A couple of things. So the rental construction incentive, the intent behind that program dating back to 2011 was to create rental units. That was initiated by the province of Saskatchewan. And as a result, we created upwards of about 3,000 units throughout the province. However, with that program, the province did not, so they set the criteria, they did not set a market rate. The Affordable Home Ownership Program, under the same suite of programs did, where you could not charge any more than 80% of the market rate. And the city's Affordable Housing Program does the same thing. However, the Rental Construction Incentive Program, again developed by the province, does not set a minimum or a maximum rent. So that, you know, concern is not stipulated within the agreement. It is simply to be transferred to the new owner. If however, they start selling the properties, they are required to pay back the city. And the agreement does have a breakdown of what those costs would be. So year 12, which is where we are at right now, they'd be required to pay the city back about 25% of those funds.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing any, I will open the vote. The vote is now open. And the vote carries. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 1113, Tax Title Tender Results, One Ad-And-Act, I can never, sorry, Gate. What is council's wish? Mayor Dion.
I move that the two bids made for tender, 46 to 2023, for the purchase of tax titled property located at One Ad-And-Act Point be denied and the administration list the property for sale on the open market.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Edwards.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. The vote is now open. Councillor Head.
In favor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item on the agenda. And councillor Head has declared a conflict. Okay, next item is Long Service and Retirement Recognition Policy. What is council's wish? Go ahead, councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move that the Long Service and Retirement Recognition Policy be approved.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Miller.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second.
Thank you very much. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do support this motion and just want to say it's so important to show the appreciation to workers that have stuck with the corporation, retiring, and just say, you know, our thank you to the workers, the hard workers of the city. And it's a small token to show the appreciation. I'm glad that we've made some changes to the program. I think they're positive changes. And I appreciate the effort on this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the vote. The vote is now open. And the vote carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to agenda item 1115. Twilight Motel Incorporated Utility Servicing Agreement, 2024 to 2028, City Services to Businesses Outside the City Boundaries. Councillor Cody.
Yes, Deputy Minister. I am minister. Just got a promotion. Just got a promotion. See, see how quickly promotions can go? Deputy Mayor, I move that the terms rates and five-year term of the Utility Servicing Agreement for the provision of water and sewer services to the Twilight Hotel, Inc., outside municipal boundaries for the period- outside municipal boundaries for the period 2024 to 2028 be approved and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Counselor Cody. Is there a seconder?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'll second that, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Head. Any discussion? Mayor Dion.
Just for, for the general public, these kinds of contracts that we enter into is a big benefit for our water treatment plant. Our water treatment plant is capable of producing a lot more water than it is. So we get an opportunity and it actually becomes a profit center for us. And so when we do these agreements, they pay quite a bit more than the residents do. So it's sort of like subsidizing the opposite way to the city. So I do appreciate these agreements and I'd like to thank everyone involved for getting this agreement done.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will open the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item on the agenda, 1116, the 2023 City Council and Executive Committee Record of Attendance. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That the report be received as information and filed. And there's quite a few, Mayor Dion, that have excellent attendance and I'd like to congratulate, congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Is there a seconder? Counselor Cody. Thank you very much, Counselor Cody. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's move to the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you. The vote carries. Next item on the agenda is 2024 Saskatchewan Urban Municipalities Association Convention Resolutions. What is the wish of counsel? Counselor Cody.
Yes, Madam. I move that the following resolutions be forwarded to the Saskatchewan Urban Municipalities Association Resolutions Committee for consideration at the 2024 convention being held April 14 to the 17th, 2024. One, increased financial support for fire services. Two, increased insurance deductible for stolen vehicles. And three, funding for Saskatchewan urban parks.
Thank you, Counselor Cody. Mayor Dion.
I'll second that and I would like to speak on it.
Go ahead.
It was interesting that this on the agenda now. I think all three of them are very well. But on the news today, the federal government has announced that they're putting a committee together to deal with that stolen cars has now become a national issue across our country. So hopefully, you know, some of all these exchanges of ideas will come up with an idea on how to bring down the thefts because they are dangerous, because they're probably the start of high-speed spaces, which we don't do because they're just too dangerous. So anything to help us with this problem is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion?
Deputy Mayor, if I can?
Right, you're in the queue, following Counselor Edwards. Go ahead, Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I know there should be some clarification on, on number two. There is some public concern on number two about the stolen vehicles, significant public concern that we're punishing the victims. And that, that's certainly a concern of mine as well. But the details of the motion talks about leaving keys in the vehicle and the, and the vehicle unlocked and unattended. And I don't know whether that's been very clear to the public, that the reason that this is being considered is because when those vehicles are stolen, it puts the public at risk because unfortunately, we have people that don't appreciate the law and they flee from the police when we're trying to pull them over. And when you're going 100 or 200 kilometers an hour in a 40 zone or in a school zone, it becomes very dangerous. And I know we have a policy that we don't pursue in the city anymore, but they still flee as soon as the lights come on and they don't stop until they're, you know, a location that they can hide. And that, it's unfortunate. We have, I don't know how to, how to call the criminals, but they don't appreciate the law when, when it comes to this. And so it's preventable. And I remember a motion come forward when I first started on council was about raising or maybe having a fee, a bylaw saying that if you left the keys in your car and we could prove it, you're now going to get a fine for $500. And I thought at the time, and I didn't support it. That's crazy. We're punishing the victim. And I had some people reach out to me about this and the statistics show that so many vehicles are being stolen with the keys in it. And the public are in danger after that occurrence. And it's unfortunate. I, I mean, we should be able to leave our keys in our car and hope that people are trustworthy in our, in our community or in this world, quite frankly, but that's not the, that's not the facts today. There's a lot of people looking for the opportunity to steal whatever the heck they can. Do I agree it's, you know, if it's an opportunity, they can steal it, it's theirs too? No, I don't agree with that at all. I, I think, I think that we should also go after the government to punish the people more when they do steal the vehicle and they are caught for doing that. And I, and I do think that we should look at a resolution at that as well because often these days, the punishment isn't fitting the crime and that's unfortunate. And, but with the current resolution, I do support because you see it, the stolen vehicles flying through the school zones and all it takes is the police to flash their lights one time. No, they might not be pursuing and they're gone. And that's unfortunate and, and that's why I do support the motion. Have had calls, lots of them, tried to explain this, most, most agree now after the explanation. But I don't think it's extremely clear to the public why this is in there. So I thought I would just make some words on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I, I want to say I do agree with the motion, particularly the, the funding for Saskatchewan urban parks. As you know, the, the report reads that the funding was cut in 2016 and so having this back implemented would have, would benefit us greatly here in Prince Albert. Looking at some of the changes we've already seen this year, has been very positive through the partnerships we've, we've built and definitely seen those additions. As you know, we have the largest urban park in the country and so having this funding implemented back by this government would be very helpful to, to ensure the residents, Prince Albert benefit from it. So really looking forward to that debate on the floor of, of Summit Convention. But I want to be, I want to make a point of saying as well that these three resolutions doesn't negate, and I think we've had conversations about it, some of the other priorities of councils throughout the province and particularly here in Prince Albert when we see, talk about homelessness and addictions and some of the struggles we see here in Prince Albert, those were raised. And I, I know in the last, around mental health issues as well, last Summit Convention. And my understandings are those, those haven't just disappeared, those will still be pressed by this advocating body. And so looking forward to this convention and/or these motions coming, or, sorry, resolutions coming to the floor of convention. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Head, for the timely information as well. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you. And the vote carries. Next item on the agenda, 1118, Action Items from City Council and Executive Committee. What is counsel's wish? Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That the action items be updated and indicated in the open items document.
Thank you. Is there a seconder for this item? Mayor Dion.
I'll second the item.
Thank you very much. Any discussion?
Question, Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Head.
Thank you. I agree with the report and with the information listed in here as well. I guess I just have a question about process. Kind of unique in this circumstance, so I'm looking at the report and several, and I want to flag CS3, more specifically FS1 as well, just missing the name, listing the names of the councils that have indicated those motions. I mean, I look at all the other motions that are in that document, they all come from this chamber and I'm wondering why, why it's indicated as such, I guess.
Is your question to the city clerk?
Sure.
Go ahead, city clerk.
The motions would be reflected with a name when it's the particular motion creating and making that motion. So it's not an administrative report that had come forward. It was a motion brought forward by the counselor. So that's why the name is on, is on there for a CS3 motion, Counselor Lenexap. That one is because Counselor Lenexap brought up that motion on her own, not with an administrative report. So that's why it's not on every motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I do need, oh, sorry, we did do this. Sorry. Did we vote? Thank you. Sorry, I lost track. I'll open the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you. We are short one vote, please check your votes. Thank you very much. The vote carries.
Deputy Mayor, I'm refusing myself on the next two items.
Thank you very much, Counselor Lenexap. Counselor Head as well. Okay. Next item on the agenda, 1119, Correspondence from Mike Henry, Re-Counselor QP Conflicts. What is counsel's wish? Counselor Cody.
Yes, I will move that the city solicitor be directed to respond to the correspondence of Mike Henry dated October 26, 2023, incorporating summarized information that is relevant to Mr. Henry's inquiries drawn from the privileged and confidential legal reporting provided by the independent law firm of Brownlee LLP.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Go ahead, Mayor.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just will call the deputy warden. I'm not sure what this motion means. So we're gonna, we're gonna provide Mike Henry confidential information. I, I don't think that that's what it means. But it kind of looks like it that way, drawn from the privileged and confidential legal reporting provided by the independent law firm. So.
Oh, just one second? We are not discussing it? Was, did you have a question to someone?
No, that, that is my question. What, what does it mean? The Brownlee letter, is it, is it fully in the public?
So, is it to our?
City Solicitor, yes.
Thank you very much. City Solicitor.
Yes, thank you, Counselor, for the question. Deputy Mayor, the answer to the question is that the reference to the privileged and confidential legal reporting is how it came in to executive committee. There is information in that report that will, that will answer the questions that Mr. Henry put forward. In order to draw that information and to declare the source from which it came, it puts the whole legal report into, into public domain.
And that letter specifies, the, the legal letter specifies what?
The, there's, there's six bullet points that I think were relevant on page two of the, of the report. It indicated that, that the, those city council members with direct employment or spousal employment relationships with QP unions in the city's workplace would be in a conflict of interest in circumstances where administrations bringing forward matters involving information, motions, discussion, deliberation, debate and/or voting on collective bargaining negotiations. It further indicated that counselors with those spousal and employment relationships with QP unions in the city's workplace should not be abdicating positions over and above their, their duties owed to the, to the interests of the municipality and its residents in favor of, of QP positions. And it also indicated that those same members of council with those relationships with QP unions are legally required to declare conflicts of interest with respect to collective bargaining matters coming before council. And that where those conflicts are not declared and there's participation in those types of matters, that contravenes Sections 117, 117.1, 117.2 of the Cities Act. And that can lead to disqualification of the counselors from council. It can lead to the requirement that the counselors resign immediately and it can indicate that or have the implication that the counselors would be disqualified from holding office in any municipality, elected office for 12 years. So those are the, those are the findings that, that are relevant to the, to that position and, or to those questions of Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry also asked what was counsel's obligation in the face where those declarations were not made.
Right.
And there, and so those have been outlined for you in another report coming up in another
agenda. In the, in the next item?
Yes.
Of what council roles are.
That's correct.
Yeah, so we could talk about that then. So basically, you're going to provide him, Mr. Henry, the, the information that we received from the independent law firm that they are, or Counselor Lenexap, or anybody that, for all of those reasons, are in a conflict of interest. And so can you remind me why we requested that independent law firm to create a report for us?
Thank you, Counselor. Through Deputy Mayor, I, I believe the, the reason that you, at least the motivation for that was that Mr. Henry wrote a letter to council and asked for these questions and asked what counsel's obligations were and what their options were. The report also indicated that the counselor's options would be to either declare the office vacant by motion or resolution of council or to apply to the court to ask the court to determine what is the significance or implication of the counselor's conduct.
Yeah, but the main reason to get that legal advice was because there were some questions on whether counselors were in a conflict of interest, right? That was the motivating factor.
That's correct, with respect to collective bargaining specifically. Yes.
Right, with, okay. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Cody.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear as to why I made the motion. It isn't that I necessarily agree with all of the points in Brownlee's letter or in their opinion. That isn't, that isn't what I meant. What I'm doing here as a counselor, I have an obligation to answer to people who are out there asking questions. Mr. Henry asked us a question. We couldn't answer it ourselves. We went to our city solicitor and the city solicitor is saying, here's what I ask you to do for the answer. And he's giving them, and he's giving the letter in one of the answers. It's the only thing I It's the only thing I'm doing here. I'm not suggesting a moment that I agree with what the letter says or anything like that. That's another decision to be made. But I just want the public to know, the reason I made this motion is because I feel I have an obligation to the public to answer their questions. And this was a question asked of me, and I've given the answer. And the answer that I gave was asking our city solicitor to respond to his letter.
Thank you, Councillor Cody. Any other discussion? Seeing no, seeing none, I will move to a vote. Sorry, it's a long agenda. The vote is now open. And the vote carries. The next item on the agenda is 1120, councillor conflict of interest, council response options. What is the wish of council? Mayor Dion.
I move that the legal counsel be instructed to apply to the Court of Queen's Bench pursuant to Section 121, Bracket 2, Bracket B of the Cities Act to have determined or declare whether Councillor Lennox Zep or Councillor Turner Head, or either of them have ceased to be qualified to remain a member of city council as a result of their participation in the matters before city and the executive committee involving the issues between the City of Prince Albert and the Canadian Union of Public Employees Locals and Conservative section of 117, 117.1, and 117.2 of the Cities Act. And if I get a second, I'd like to speak on it.
And you meant King's Bench?
Oh, what did I say?
Queen's.
After 70 years, it's hard to forget.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just wanting to ensure that... Okay, do we have a second? Councillor Edwards.
Thank you. I'll second that for discussion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mayor Dion.
If you don't mind...
Oh, Mayor Dion, please rise.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you, mind if I sit? It's starting to bother me.
Sorry.
Going up and down.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'll explain it later.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, I just have four or five points I'd like to read, okay? And the first one is, we didn't put ourselves in this position. It became upon us. Council received an official correspondence from a member of the public outlining the concerns of two councillors during QB 8A2 strike. The concern arose from our spousal and employment relationship with QB and advised active participation in matters concerning QB's locals that become to council and executive committee. Council has the responsibility to protect the integrity of the governance procedures and the public confidence in the procedure. The legal responsibility of councillors owed to the public as councillors, the responsibility has come before personal relationships. It has been put ahead of personal relationships with our families, ahead of our relationships with our employer. It has come ahead of our relationships of each colleagues of council. Elected officials refer to this matter as a conflict legal opinion. The local opinion determined the two city councillors have themselves been declared conflict of interest in the QB matters and should have excused themselves in participating in instruction. There, unfortunately, two occasions where councillors apparently have not followed the legislation. A member of council cannot serve two masters. When a conflict exists, they must excuse themselves from the discussion, from the discussion-making and having any potential of influence the decision or discussion. Council has the legal obligation and ethical responsibility to ensure the governance policies and councillors follow the oath of office is upheld. In order to protect the integrity of council and the process, the public confidence in council, we are requesting that the courts review the facts and determine what needs to be our next step in legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councillor Edwards.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This is very difficult. This is something that I never thought we would have to see in my day on council. It's been seven years now. And listening to the mayor, he's right in that council didn't put us in this situation. And I think one of the main reasons that I supported the legal opinion that we got from an external source was to say, listen, here's a legal opinion, this is what it says, now, what are we gonna do about it? Are you gonna withdraw from conversations? And I think we saw Councillor Head withdraw from voting on the agreement with QB, with 8A2. So he did withdraw. He took the legal advice, which I thought was important. And unfortunately, Councillor Lennox Zep chose to participate because she, I guess, didn't agree with the legal opinion. So do we have, do we know that the two councillors, and I think these are separate issues? I do wish we could split them one way or the other, because I think they are separate. And I don't know whether we can split them, just for separate determinations. And I mean, they're gonna have separate results regardless. They're gonna talk individually. I get that. But, I forget where I was going with that. So, do we have anything that says to us? No, they don't agree that they're in conflict of interest. Do we know from these two councillors that there is, yeah, we don't agree. We're not in conflict of interest.
Who is your question directed to?
I guess whoever can answer that. City Solicitor, maybe?
Would be City Solicitor? Go ahead, City Solicitor.
Thank you for the question, Councillor, and through Deputy Mayor. We have received a legal letter from legal counsel for Councillor Lennox Zep indicating that the position that he's articulating on behalf of her is that she was not in conflict of interest.
Okay, okay. So disagreeing with the fact, with the information that they are in conflict of interest. So we're left in a tough position then, is... Instead of, which I think, I mean, I can't speak for everybody in the room, but I know that if I was told I'm in conflict of interest from a legal standpoint, I would choose from here on in to withdraw all of these discussions that I was pointed to. I would choose that. And I don't know whether they have chosen that. Obviously, one with the letter says, like, do the two councillors plan to remove themselves from QB discussions? And I'm assuming that this isn't gonna stop at maybe just the agreements, the contract agreements. You did mention here, and the report mentions, talks about kind of QB relations. So do we have some information that they're planning to withdraw?
And that's again to the Solicitor?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Go ahead, Solicitor.
Whoever can answer that question.
Yes, thank you, Councillor, for the question, and through the Deputy Mayor. I understand that the City Clerk has communicated with both councillors and have asked the question, but with respect to collective bargaining only. And we have indication, as I understand it, and perhaps the City Clerk can correct me if I've got this exactly right, but my understanding is that Councillor Lennox Zep has indicated that in future she will remove herself from collective bargaining matters dealing with QB. And I believe she has indicated that she would also, as has been her practice in the past, excuse herself from other non-collective bargaining agreement issues involving the city QB unions. With respect to Councillor Head, I believe that the question as asked was only with respect to collective bargaining. And he has indicated that he will in future excuse himself and declare a conflict with respect to collective bargaining matters involving QB local unions of the city.
So is she's gonna choose to withdraw from bargaining? Or from discussions around bargaining?
Yep. Going forward, that's the, that has been the indication, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I believe 100% that there needs to be that line drawn somewhere. And I don't think it needs to be in the sand, because the sand can be dissolved in water somewhere. I think it needs to be in cement. Here it is. This is where the conflict of interest occurs, especially within labor. It's very critical. I mean, impacting negotiations is so critical. Is there a way to move forward with that? We gotta draw this. Like, a determination needs to be done by a judge. I get it. Because a legal opinion doesn't count, because if you don't agree with it, you can choose. And that's not right either. And that's the position that we're in right now. So is there a way, and this is my concern, is, I mean, I'm not a headhunter here for sure. I don't necessarily want to see anybody off of council. I know that this is a legislated act that we have to follow, and there's rules behind it. But is there a way in this act that says, listen, the judge can make this determination, you are in a conflict of interest, without making recommendations to remove them from the seat?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Councillor, through you, Deputy Mayor. The, if the matter, I think the question assumes that the motion, if passed, which then refers the issues to a court for a judge to determine, A, whether there has been conduct that contravenes the conflict of interest standards of conduct for councillors in the Cities Act, and B, whether that conduct disqualifies the councillor, and see what the implication of the disqualification and the conduct is if those first two things are found by the court to exist. Those are the three issues. And certainly, the position that could be taken by a representative of the City of Prince Albert in that court proceeding could be to look for clarification of the requirements surrounding persons with spousal and employment relationships with QB in all matters, and could look to put to the court that the city council is not looking to have the councillors disqualified. Ultimately, though, the answer to all those three questions, once it's put to the court, will be left with the judge. And the judge will determine the severity of it. All we can do then is sort of articulate positions which could be persuasive to the judge. Obviously, on the other side, if there's legal representation, those submissions of council would be put to the judge and may be persuasive as well. But you could take a position, I think if I understand your question correctly, could take a position that we ask the court to clarify the rules with respect to participation on QB matters and could convey to the court that the council is not interested in having any permanent disqualification of the councillors. But it would be up to the judge.
It would be up to the judge. So we could put that information that says, you know, not maybe all, maybe all council want that total determination, or maybe some or all, or none. That's, how do we vote on that? Whether we alter that, this motion, that says, you know what? Just determine whether they were in conflict of interest. Suggest, make some recommendations on what you see. Although, although I don't know whether the judge is mandated to determine the sanctions, we can only give information to the judge, I think I just heard you say this. We can only say, listen, council isn't totally sure they want to see, you know, removal of, from their chairs. And I'm one of those people right now. I don't necessarily want to see them removed from the chair, but I want a line drawn. Because it's very uncomfortable when you have members of the public come to you, and I've had this, say, how can two councillors that have some connection to QB, and there's the understanding or perception of a conflict of interest? I've had members, how can they participate in these discussions, in particular for collective bargaining? And any other information that we may deal with? It puts us in a difficult situation, because we're not supposed to, you know, rule on this, or it's not our obligation to call them out on a conflict of interest, right? So I guess this is how we're here. But I wanna, I'm a person of second chances. That's pretty clear where I work. It's, it's just, if you've made a mistake, correct that mistake. And to me, again, the legal opinion, we saw the legal opinion. If I would have saw that, I would be, I would be done with any kind of conversations with regards to anything QB related. I would be, that would be where I would sit. I know that. I didn't have anything prepared for this meeting, because, my goodness, this is such a difficult... This is such a difficult item. I couldn't. I didn't prepare anything. And I'm kind of rambling here. But it's such a difficult position that we've been put in. And we, again, the mayor said it earlier, we didn't put us in this situation. So I hope, from what I've said today, that you can take, and I guess we don't need a motion on this, but some of the information that you can take to a judge is, not all council necessarily want to see a removal from their chair. I do want to see that line drawn in the cement. Here it is. This is a conflict. If you participate, again, it is a conflict. Or not, whatever they determine, or not. So that's from me. That's how I feel about all this situation. And thanks for listening to me ramble.
Thank you very much. Councillor Edwards. Mayor Dion.
I just want to follow up a little on Councillor Edwards. Because we are in a tough position, but you gotta remember how we got here. Number one, we got a letter from a resident. It wasn't any of us that started it, okay? And what's disappointing for me is that the last meeting when we voted, and they decided they were gonna vote, I warned them. I got up in the chair and said, you're well aware that we have a legal position that says you're in a conflict of interest. And I asked you not to vote. And they turned me down. One turned me down, you know? And so that's how we got here. It wasn't sparked by us. It was sparked by a resident. And we have to respond to residents. And our integrity and trust is all we have. As politicians, you shouldn't even use those two words, because they don't believe you have either one of them. But we have to work hard to get to that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Cody.
Yes, Madam Chair. As Councillor Edwards said, this is a very, very difficult situation. We sit here day after day with our colleagues, and now we're saying, well, we don't want to sit with you any longer. That's not exactly what we're trying to do here. I don't think anyone in this assembly, or anyone in this administration, wants those two members left from this assembly. I think that's the last thing that we want. That's the last thing we want. Do we want to have them get a little slap on the hand for something they may have done inadvertently or by mistake? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And I think we need to do that. But what I have the biggest rub with here is really Section 121.2 of the Cities Act. Really, if you read that very carefully, it basically says that the act have determined or declared whether Councillor Zep or Councillor Head, or either of them, have ceased to be qualified to remain a member of city council as a result of their participation. That's a little harsh. I think if you wouldn't have let put that in there, I might have said, yes, this isn't a bad motion. Not a bad motion at all. But you know, that's a bit harsh, when they say, that's it. Look at those things only. That's what the Cities Act says. It doesn't say other stuff. Now, I'm sure that a judge isn't gonna be silly enough to say, well, that's not the only... only two things I'm thinking of. I'm sure they're gonna look at other things and say, say things like, well, maybe we should say that you can do this, or you can't do that, or whatever the case may be. But that's why I have trouble with the resolution. I think that the resolution is a bit on the harsh side, and I'm really torn between not doing something and doing nothing. I think if we do nothing, it's wrong, because the member that we received the letter from asked us to do something. And we, I think, have an obligation as citizens who are elected here to do our job. And our job is to answer to people's wishes. That, the wishes of that council were, that something had to be done. So, we're going to do that. But what is it we do? That's another question. I, I, I'm really reluctant, in many respects, to vote for this, but I'm also reluctant in many respects not to vote for it. Because there's got to be something done, but what is it we should do? I guess we have to allow a judge to do this. I know, very out separate, we spoke about this some period of time ago, and all this conflict was coming up. We said, you know, this council can take this and adjudicate it. We can do that. But it was gonna take us a couple of days and witnesses and all that, and you know, none of us have that kind of time, and maybe none of us have that expertise either. So, we said, let's go to some independent body. Our city solicitor, I think, made the suggestion, or the mayor, or whoever, let's go to a judge. There isn't anybody more independent than that. So, that's why we went to the, went this route. And this route is the only route I think we could have gone to. But now we sit on the horns of a dilemma with an act that says, well, here's really what we think you should do. And that isn't, I don't think, what we want to do. So, here we sit, but at the same time, something needs to be done. What it is we need to be done, I'm not exactly sure. I would hope and pray that the good judge would say, look at, something's gonna be done to you, but we're not gonna go as harsh as to say, you're no longer a member.
Thank you councillor Cody. Councillor Solomon.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I know that both councillors have good hearts and good intentions, and they represent the city well, they represent their words well, and they obviously feel they have both followed the law. Neither one has decided to publicly say that I was in conflict of interest. So, in their hearts and in their minds, they are good people with good intentions that truly believe they are right as well. Conflict of interest laws exist for a reason, and, or I guess for a few different reasons. But most importantly to me is to maintain public confidence in the decisions that are made in this chamber. As the newest member, I haven't been sitting here very long, but it was important to me that when I put my name forward, that whatever happened in this chamber, it was of utmost importance that I maintain the positive relationships with the colleague, my colleagues in this chamber, and with the public as much as I possibly can. And that was, that was very, very important to me. We know that we make those decisions, or make decisions in this chamber at all times, and we know we have to maintain the integrity of this chamber. And I know that if my participation in any discussion was gonna tank that decision, I know that I would withdraw. I just, that would be something that I would have to do. So, in some cases, a member's presence in the chamber, or a presence, or them choosing not to be in the chamber, is just as important to the decision as whether they voted for it. So, I'll just carry on. The taxpayer who raised the issue is not alone. I've had many people come to me and talk to me. And this issue, no matter which side of it you're on, is divisive. We've got people that are pro, pro something being done, and we have some people that are saying nothing inappropriate happened. And so, that's really a distraction to the work that we're trying to do as a city, to make the city the best place that it can be for all of our residents and where we live, and the surrounding areas. So, it's unfortunate this is where we are today, and I know my colleagues have suggested that as well. So, as a councillor, I'm responsible for my actions, and as are they. So, did they make a mistake? Possibly. However, I'm not a legal expert. When I interpret the act and I look at the consequences, I also agree, our options aren't good. You know, the six options, whether they resign, it's referred to the court by the voters, we could declare them, their chairs vacant, we could refer it to the court, which is the one we're talking about, we could take no action, which I don't think is appropriate. I think the public is expecting something from this. And of course, we could commit to a standard for future enforcement, which may become out of this anyway. So, realistically, I do think that it has to be referred. I'm also not in favor of removing either of my colleagues. However, that's not my decision to make once it goes to the court. And that's the unfortunate part, is we do have to have some clear guidelines for the public to maintain the integrity of this chamber. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you councillor Solomon. Councillor Miller.
Thank you, madam chair. I guess I'd like to start off as well as saying that we're in a difficult situation here, and I've been here a long time, and I haven't seen this before, but here's my first time. And, you know, I look around the room, and I have trust that everybody is doing the right thing, and I do trust that they did the right thing for themselves. And here we are with two different legal opinions as well, and they're both conflicting. And so, that's why I agree that we need to go to the judge, and he can make that determination of what he thinks he sees with the Cities Act and other things that he might. But I really find it interesting that only one person written us a letter. And I never had anybody phone me about this situation at all. And I did receive a couple of emails from the public, just last couple of days here, and read them, and, but I just find this very difficult situation. And so, when we do a conflict of interest, I do believe that we do the best thing that we do for ourselves, because we're only responsible for ourselves. And, yeah, some people get mad, because we do do one, and, because we don't know why, or whatever, but people have to understand that there's more to all of this than you know. And I'm just counting on the judge to do the right thing.
Thank you councillor Miller. Councillor Edwards.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to speak one more time, and I'll be very brief. In the, councillor Cody alluded to the section 121-2 statement of this. Is that the critical aspect of this motion? Is that something that has to be included in this motion? In order to refer to a judge?
Is your question to this, the solicitor?
Yes, sure, we'll go to that, yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, solicitor.
Thank you councillor, for the question. The, that is the language of the section. The, the earlier section speaks to what is the consequence of take, of conduct that falls within certain categories. The consequence of a violation of section 117, which is the failure to declare a conflict, and the failure to remove a, remove yourselves from the debate, the discussion, or to influence, try to influence the outcome. The consequence of that is a quotation disqualification from office. And that leads to the requirement under section 120 to either resign, or for voter challenge, or for council to take action, or through these different six options that councillor Solomon alluded to, you could go all the way in the range to do nothing as well. But, but the disqualification is necessary language. That's the language of the section. It sounds, it sounds harsh, but I think that it's intended to actually put teeth in the, in the standard of conduct that is required. Now, seeing that, the judge has, has a full range of options in the event that the matter does go to court. The judge can confirm the disqual, that the parties are disqualified, can actually set aside the matter, the disqualification motion, can dismiss the application. The judge can also find that even if there is a disqualification, that the disqualification arose through inadvertence or by reason of an honest mistake. So, the judge has a very broad range of outcomes that the judge can consider if the matter goes before the court.
Thank you, that helps me.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll move to the vote. The vote is now open. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business. Next item on the agenda, 12, unfinished business. We have a motion from councillor Lennox Zepf of the feasibility of recycle bins rotary Adventure Park playground. Go ahead councillor Lennox Zepf.
Thank you. I move that administration provide a report regarding the feasibility of installing recycle bins at Rotary Adventure Park Playground.
Councillor Miller?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there a discussion? Mayor Deon.
Well, I'd like to hear from the director, because I've been out there, and I understand we've ordered new benches, new garbage stands, new recycling bins, new fire pits, so much is happening in that Adventure Park, that, and we don't need a report, we need the bins. So, I'd just like to hear from the director if that's our plan, because then I'm gonna ask the mover to withdraw the motion, if it's true.
Okay, thank you very much. Director.
Thank you, madam chair, and, excuse me, members of council. So, the mayor is correct, we do have recycle bins that are gonna be, that are planned to be installed at the Rotary Adventure Park for this upcoming season. What I think the department would be more than willing to do, and I believe we had a bit of this discussion during budget committee, is a report as part of our Little Red River Park, the annual report we bring through the Community Services Advisory Committee. We do report on, you know, upcoming priorities at the park, upcoming improvements, operational matters that need council's attention. This feasibility request, what'll be interesting is whether or not those recycle bins are used for that intended purpose. The feasibility will really come down to that. So, while we'll have them there, we really will be promoting and encouraging the public to use them for the intended purpose. We'll then, we'll monitor that activity and report back to council as part of that annual report. If they are being utilized for the, for the intended purpose, fantastic, we'll continue to move on. If we have some challenges, we can then consider our options after this upcoming season as part of that reporting structure. If council's willing to consider that, I would offer that for this evening's consideration.
Thank you, director. Councillor Lennox Zepf.
A question and some clarification for the director. So, did I hear that you're, you'd like the report to be a part of the, the Little Red River Park master plan, is that?
I think what I'm suggesting is, we have that reporting structure in place already on an annual basis. We would use that existing structure to report on the status of the recycle bins that we will be installing. We'll just include it as part of that overall annual report, and monitor it up to that point and provide that information.
Does that make sense? And then a question for the director. Do we know how many recycle bins are being allotted for Rotary Adventure Park?
Not off the top of my head. I do know on the actual site plan, the parks manager has identified throughout that site where all the garbage cans, recycle bins, park benches, you know, whatever other features we had that were intended for this site, but the number I don't have this evening. They will be distributed. I guess the best way to say it is they are identified on the site plan, so that they're evenly distributed throughout the site.
Perfect, okay. I appreciate that. Yes, I agree with what's being said. I think then the motion would read as a part of the, as a part of the annual report. And I'll just, I won't make any change to the motion yet, because I see there's other discussion to happen, but I have one comment to make, is that the reason that I noticed this is that I attended a field trip with one of our local schools, with the whole, the entire elementary school attended the Rotary Adventure Park. What a gem. Absolute gem. Everyone loved it, it was beautiful. And you have your packed lunches there, we had over 100 children there, they're having their packed lunches, and how many juice boxes and bottles of juice and milk came out? And children are coming up to me saying, where can I put my recycling? We don't have any recycle bins right now at this park for children, and we've raised this generation to want to recycle. So, we, so I commend the director that we're now getting those recycle bins. When we spoke about this at budget time, that wasn't the case, and so I'm glad we're moving forward. But I'll just leave the motion as it is until I hear the other discussion. But I agree, I agree in spirit with what the director suggested with the annual report.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Edwards.
Well, I wouldn't have spoke if we heard some wordsmithing on the motion, so I don't think we need the feasibility on installing recycle bins, because we're already installing them. And I agree, it's critical. You're out there, and we don't have them, it's a new park, so they'll get there. But, so, as long as you wordsmith it a little bit and doesn't talk about installing, or are we gonna get a report regardless of whether this motion is carried? I guess that's the question. I don't know whether we need this motion whatsoever.
Is your question directed to the director?
At the director, who I, sorry, was looking at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, madam chair, to councillor Edwards' question. So, so, once this was, this topic rose at budget committee, that allowed us to take the steps necessary to make sure that we had the presence of recycle bins on site for this upcoming season. Because, and then, secondly, because of the topic, and, and I agree with councillor Lennox Zepf, like, we, we want to send the message that we want to have recycle opportunities on site. So, because of the, I think, the importance of recycling, and the fact that this is a beautiful nature park, it fits nicely with that concept as well, and treating our garbage properly, and our recyclable materials properly, understanding the full discussion, it's important that it's in the annual report coming up. So, we will, we will commit to that, we will make sure it's monitored, and we will make sure you have that information following the outdoor season that's upcoming.
Without this motion, you'll have that. Thank you.
Mayor Deon.
Well, I won't be supporting the motion strictly because, I'm not gonna support a few of them on the agenda, is, I need our staff to work. Adventure Park is a work in progress. It's not even close to being completed. I've heard three or four more ideas that people are gonna fund more projects out there, more equipment. It's a great, one of the best things that we've done. It's one of our jewels beside the Cook Municipal Golf Course, we have the Little Red, and we've really made that Little Red. I don't need our staff doing reports, I need them out there working, installing this equipment, make sure it's being done. I think this is way too early. And we've already heard from the director, it's gonna be part of their feasibility study because they heard it at budget. I don't think we should be micromanaging. I don't need to tell someone to put a garbage can there and recycle, that's way too low. Let's make the policies and the decisions that's gonna move this city forward.
Thank you. Councillor Lennox Zepf.
I'm withdrawing this motion based on what I've heard in discussion, and that the good news that we are already installing the recycle bins, and I look forward to reading that annual report that'll include recycling.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the mayor and councillors forum. Mayor Deon.
Thank you for this opportunity. I, oh, I'll rise.
Sorry. But if you're not, well.
First of all, maybe I should explain, first I want to thank Don Kilmer, the deputy mayor, frigging the chair. I've been waiting for surgery for six months, and I got a phone call on Friday, they had a cancellation, so I had it done at 8:30 this morning. It's like carpal tunnel, but on the fingers and the men, it goes on the inside, not on the wrist. And, so I want to thank you for stepping up. I would like to share something, and I want to thank, I did go to Caniston on Saturday. It was Saskatchewan Hockey Week, and Saskatchewan Hockey Day across the province was on Saturday. It was Saskatchewan Hockey Week, and Saskatchewan Hockey Day across the province was on Saturday. And I just wanna thank the following clubs. The U-18 Foxes played out there, the P-A Timberjacks played out there, the Bears played out there, the Mentals played out there, the Pirates played out there, and the Raiders signed autographs. And out of the 550 people that were in the stands, I thought 500 were from Prince Albert. But Kynaston, I met with them on a few other subjects while I was there, talked about how they're struggling with curling as well because they have three sheets of ice. But they were so thankful that we're their neighbors, and they even called us their partners. Because if you think of all these clubs, packed up their equipment, traveled there and played in that rink. And it was just a great day and the, the community shone, so I wanna thank all these people that were involved. And I wanna thank the community of Kynaston for stepping up, because the year before that was in Shelbrook. But really for our, our kids in our community to get out and, and share around our community, the talents that we have. And I just wanna reach out and thank them.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Lennox Zepf?
Thank you. So, I wanted to rise because today I noticed on our City PA social media feed that the city is going to be offering drop-in parent and tot swimming lessons, which is something that we discussed a lot at Budget. And I have heard so many positive, positive things from families. This is something we haven't had before, is a drop-in option. We have long, long wait lists for, for all of our swimming lessons, but especially the parent and tot swimming lessons. And I hear it all the time from parents coming to me and saying, "I, I was up at 7:00 AM, I tried to register for the swimming lessons, and I didn't get in," and it's, it's really unfair. And now, as a result of, of our, our Department of Community Services moving forward on this, many more families are going to be able to, to enter swimming lessons, have those young, early childhood experiences of, you know, getting exposure to water with professionals, but also bringing in some revenue to our city because there is a fee attached. And there, those wait lists tell me that there's, you know, people out there who are willing to pay for this type, type of programming. I'm also pleased that during our budget, and I think also in our recent press releases, the Department of Community Services has also stated that they're expecting additional swimming lesson spaces with the new pool. And so, that is also good news. So, I just wanna say thank you. The department heard us at Budget, we talked about this, and I think a lot of families feel heard right now.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Solomon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I'm gonna rise and just talk about a couple of events I was privileged to be a part of over the weekend. One being the Sportsman Gala. It's an annual event, of course, hosted by the Kinsman Club, which have been long-term member of, I don't know, thirteen to fourteen years, I believe. But it was a wonderful event, we had a great turnout, the city supported it. And of course, I wanna recognize, I guess, many people in the room that happened to attend on council and on staff. So, thank you for that and thank you for your support. Chris Chelios gave a wonderful speech. We raised a, a good sum of money that we're putting towards Project Triple Play. And I just, I wanna thank the community for their support and coming out year after year and having so much fun with us, as we have so much fun putting it on. So, thank you for all of that. The second event I was able to attend yesterday was hosted by the Prince Albert Historical Society at the museum, and there was a coffee and conversation about the Lake Hole Falls Tobacco. And we had a, an author from Sassoon that came on over and shared, I guess, all the history behind his book. And basically, sorry, his name was Paul Von Poole, and he shared it. And I, you know, even though we hear about these things again and again and again, I still learned something new yesterday. So, wonderful event. Apparently, the, the Prince Albert Historical Society puts them on every month with different topics. So, if you haven't been, well worth it. And again, I just wanna mention on that one, yesterday I was quite surprised, and it might have been the topic, but I'll bet you there was forty to fifty-five people there, somewhere in that range. It was standing room only, and it was great to see on a Sunday afternoon. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a while since we had a council meeting, so we're going back to Christmas for this one. I'd just like a big thanks to all who donated for the person bags for Christmas for the homeless people. And there was about two hundred purses and bags for Detox, Our House, Stepping Stone Shelter. And I'd like to thank Rose and Izzy for helping pack, and Eleanor for her lovely scarves every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cody?
Yes, just wanted to say a big congratulations to Barry Bresdin, who is the new Citizen of the Year for the City of Prince Albert. Barry is born and raised in Prince Albert, but he was away here for a long time as a businessman out in, out in the West. He's back and he looks after the seniors organization. As you know, last year, we had a great event when he had the seniors over fifty-five, I think you were one of the helpers there. And, and Barry was quite surprised when we ended up at the, at the cafe down here and, and where he got the, got the award. I've never seen a guy so surprised in my life, but he walked in for a meeting and, and there we were, and he was, he was pretty honored and he's pretty thankful. And there's going to be a banquet here shortly to, in his honor, to give him the honorable Just Award for being the Citizen of the Year.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I do wanna speak about the Kinsman Athlete Sportsman of the Year. I attended that event as a volunteer this year, and what an event it is. It's just, it's a great, well-organized event that the money goes to the Kinsman motto, greatest needs of Prince Albert. And so important for the community to know that these service clubs need members. And I hope, I hope people in our community recognize that without service clubs, we don't have a lot of things that we see in our city. Not just the Kinsman, lots of service clubs need the assistance. And, and I hope people can step forward because, boy, volunteering is tough to attract people. We had some, some young members come out, or young future members at the, at this event come out, great to see. That's, it's, it's very, it's needed in our community. I do wanna say congratulations to Gage Grasic, Female Athlete of the Year, Taz Smith-Windsor, Male Athlete of the Year, and our very own Bruce Vance, Kinsman, Sportsman of the Year. All very well-deserved recognitions. It was such, it was just good to hear from everybody and all that attended to watch them accept their awards. Thank you very much for coming out and supporting it. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lennox Zepf?
I would just wanna say a thank you to Counselor Miller for her work on the Purses and Bags at Christmas Season. Counselor Miller is the, the, the head runner of that project and has been for many, many years. And she takes the time during the, that week before Christmas when all of us are very, very busy and just to make sure that, that we can give something to our vulnerable citizens in the city. And I, I appreciate that and, and I appreciate the mentorship that's provided in that work. So, thank you, Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Dion?
Just a quick follow-up about the Sportsman Dinner. One thing that my colleagues forgot to share is it was their kids. And that's how we're gonna get volunteers out. Counselor Edward had his son there, Counselor Solomon had his son there, and that's how you do it. That's how we're gonna get volunteers out. We have to teach them, because unfortunately, my age group, we're all guilty of that. You know, they like to press the buttons. But one thing I'd like to do is all three award winners acknowledge the city for the facilities they're building. They said it's because of the facilities that they're aware are they in their careers today. The ones with the university, the other one, I think, is with, both with the university. And it was really good with teens because the female athlete could not be there, but we got to watch her like it was live on the screen, and you very well spoke. But all three of them emphasized the importance of facilities and congratulated the city because that's helped them with their career. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to give a big shout-out and thank you to the Prince Albert Topper's Volleyball Club for putting on and representing our, our city here. The first week in January, they were in Battleford, our thirteen U team. And this, this last weekend, or yesterday, actually, in their CPAC facility here in Carlton, seventeen U and fourteen U. And there was athletes from all over Saskatchewan, so it was nice to host and/or be on the road representing our city. And so, I wanna give a big shout-out and thank you to all the coaches, all the volunteers, athletes, and everybody involved, I guess, in that as well. So, a big shout-out to them.
Thank you, Counselor Head. Any others? Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, Counselor Head sparked one thing. We, the city, or, or female hockey in the city, the Foxes, hosted a massive hockey tournament for all age groups. They do it every year, and wow, what a tournament it is. Every rink is booming, every hotel is sold out, there's people enjoying the city across, you know, it's just, it's just awesome. And I think the fifty-fifty was, I don't know, thirty-five thousand dollars. It's massive. And it all goes to support female hockey in the city, and it's such a wonderful event and, and well-organized. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I just wanna add to, we all talk about female hockey. Well, I also wanna add to that, female refereeing. We can't forget the refs. We have quite a few refs now, females, that are refereeing in the men's league. And so, that's great to see, you know, that they're just not stepping up in hockey, but refereeing. And I just said that because I noticed that half and half over the weekend, we're male and female, doing both male and female's games. So, I thought that was excellent, too.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Any others? Seeing none? Moving on to the next item, inquiries? Any inquiries? Counselor Miller?
I have one, too.
Thank you, Counselor Head.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm wondering about the flashing crossing light at Sixteenth Avenue and Fifteenth Street West. They had said it was going to be done in the middle of December, but it's still not there. And kids are crossing for school there, and it'd be greatly appreciated if that could happen soon.
Thank you. Any other inquiries? Counselor Head?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have two that I would like a response to, I guess. First one would be the clearing of the Rotary Trail, more specifically, when it ends at about five hundred block in front of Riverside School, and it comes on to Riverside Street. And again, gets back down to, a few blocks later, down to the, to, back down to Riverbank. So, in that, in that section, I would assume when we are clearing the path, that also gets cleared. And so, some residents have reached out about that over the weekend. Will that be cleared this week? And can we expect when we are clearing the path that it will be a part of that path clearing the sidewalk along the road? And that'll be my first inquiry. My second inquiry was about our bus services on Friday. I understand there were some lates. And I guess I did put it into the reported concern as well, but I thought I'd ask here tonight about those bus services and whether or not we can expect any further delays in the future.
Did you have a question for the Director at this point? Did you want an answer now?
Whether they make an answer now, that'd be great. One on the snow clearing and then the second one on the bus routes.
I'm looking at the Director and he will give us an answer in writing when he has, when he has the ability to ask.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, inquiry responses? There is one, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Council Inquiry Responses. What's your wish, Council? Counselor Lennox Zepf?
That the inquiry response be received as information and filed.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Thank you, Mayor. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move to the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you. Next, notice of motions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, motions. Seventeen point one, a motion from Counselor Edwards, financial impacts and the overall well-being of the city. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I so move that the Mayor's Office prepare a letter to both the Provincial Saskatchewan Party and the Federal Liberal Party to have an in-person meeting with all members of council, Grand Chief Brian Hardlot of Prince Albert, Grand Council, and Sherry McLennan of the Métis Nation of Saskatchewan to discuss the following important matters in relation to crime, homelessness, and social issues in the City of Prince Albert. Pardon? Yeah, no, this is the information that I would like in this letter. I think it should be included in the motion. So, I'm gonna carry on and discuss why I put these items in there. The financial impacts and the overall well-being of the city, including crime statistics due to increasing homelessness, crime, and other social issues occurring in our city, the urgent need for support over these issues, which must be addressed. Our city is made up of over forty percent indigenous population, which only includes the people who filled out their census. The costs associated with homelessness, crime, and other social issues that are included in the twenty twenty-four municipal budget. Recognize that these issues are a regional issue and that should not fall on the businesses and residents of the city, and that associated costs are not sustainable for our community. The need for a drug court and treatment beds to address requirements of the possible sanctions this type of court offers. How to manage the rise in violent crime, and how to address the increasing property crime. Action plans must be put in place to assist with the mental health and addictions issues that our city face today. As this is an urgent request, these meetings must occur prior to the end of March twenty twenty-four. And all responses regarding the request to meet and discuss will be shared with the media in Prince Albert. If I get a seconder, I will discuss it.
I will second it, and then I'll speak on it as well.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I, I made this motion mostly because there's a lot of information and, and a lot of good work that's occurring within the city trying to tackle a lot of these issues. Number one, we don't know what's all happening, and council are the first people that, that our residents talk to about it. What's happening with, you know, homelessness, what actions are being taken, what's being planned, council, you need to do more. Well, our role is to ensure things are happening, and meetings are, are occurring. We're, we're discussing needles and action plans on how to deal with, with the discarded needles. That's, that's occurring on a regular basis. There's, there's a lot of good work happening. And the problem that I have, and the reason I want this is because it's important to know and to provide our residents and businesses that, listen, there is a plan occurring. These are the things that we're all trying to work on. Instead of, hey, you need to do this and you need to do that. We are trying to work on it. Lots of organizations, the government of Saskatchewan's trying to do, to work on certain topics. But we need coordination, and, and we need that discussion, and we need it with all of us in this room. I think it's so critical because there's lots of moving parts to this. But we need to push, a, and we need to make some noise. But it's not about blaming, it's about what are we going to do to improve the lives of our residents and our businesses and our visitors to our city? And that's what it needs to be. And I think everybody wants Prince Albert to be a great place, and I think it still is a great place, but we have some work to do. And these are core issues that everybody, every room I enter, these are the topics that are talked about. Doesn't matter whether it's seniors or teenagers, these are the topics. So, let's address them, let's move forward, let's provide some hope to our residents that things are being worked on, and we can tackle this in our small city of forty thousand people. We can tackle some of these issues if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Dion?
I, I supported the motion strictly because I got him to explain to me what it was. We were concerned that, you know, he wanted reports on all these, but I, I take it now that they're more agenda items because they're gonna ask me both provincially and federally what we wanna talk about. And I think maybe this is an opportunity to share what happens when we all work together, you know? Sometimes you'll have three or four silos, but sometimes that's an advantage. And I'll give you an example. We have one group, a crime group, that's led by Counselor Head and Counselor Edwards. We have the downtown. We have the Downtown Bid involved with the Minister of Health. We have me writing letters and meeting weekly on these subjects. But Downtown Bid was very successful, working with everybody involved. That we all heard the announcement, I heard from the provincial government, where they're adjusting the harms reduction policy. That came totally because of all these meetings that we've been having. And I want to thank the ministry. We actually had a Zoom meeting with the Downtown Bid and the people involved in advance of the announcement so that we knew it, and that's what we want. We want to work together in partnership and harmony. We don't want to fight. Because one thing that we have learned in all these areas, we all have the same issues, no matter what size we have, you know? And so I'm excited. I'm either willing to take this challenge on, write the letter, put all those items in it, and move forward because I think that'll be an exciting meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Solomon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for the chance to rise on this. And thank you, Counselor Edwards, for putting this forward. I do believe the answer to the issues that are facing Prince Albert do exist with engaging all levels of government, federal, provincial, to our first nations partners, and of course, city council as the leaders you are in the community as well. So this is something I've been advocating for, and I strongly believe this will make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I have a little tiny bit to add. It would give us also an opportunity to let the federal government know that the money that they put to our, the grant that we have received, the really valuable work that has been done and changes that have occurred because of our well-being and safety funds, it allows us to actually discuss that.
Deputy Mayor, I just have one question. Question for, I think, the Director of Planning, I think it would be. The funds that Deputy Mayor mentioned regarding social issues, how have they been spent?
Go ahead. Oh. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Lennox up, for the question. It's a great question, one I wasn't expecting this evening. I'd be happy to report back on what that looks like. I can say that we are administering those funds as per our agreement with Public Safety Canada and that Anna Disdale, our community safety and well-being coordinator, is in charge of those. If you'd like more of a detailed explanation, I'd be happy to provide counsel with that. Certainly, that would be fine. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Seeing none, let's move to the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, in favor.
Thank you, and it carries. Next item on the agenda is public forum. No one has registered. And finally, the last item. Mayor Dion.
See my sitting in this chair? Move to adjourn.
Counselor moves to adjourn. Seconder?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lennox up. Let me just open the vote. The vote is now open. Counselor Head?
In favor.
And motion carries. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.